We ready, Leland?
Ready. Order seven P.M., City of Hazel Park. Roll call, please.
Mayor Parisi.
Here.
Mayor Protem Keaton.
Here.
Councilman LaCurel.
Here.
Councilman Webb.
Here.
Councilman Selma.
Here.
Indications, suggestions. Andy LaCurel, please.
Thank you, madam. Holy Spirit, source of all life, we gather together as the elected officials of our community, charged by the people to discern our future together. We are a diverse body brought together by the same Spirit. We pray that we will be faithful to the work at hand, to set aside our own personal agendas to seek out the greater good. Open our minds and our hearts to listen in for your will for us and bestow upon us your wisdom and grace. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of agenda.
Civil mayor, support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We have a special presentation, Hazel Park Historic Commission.
Madam Mayor, Council, Richard Robbins, the Chair of the Hazel Park Historic Commission. In attendance, we've got Beth Holland and Chuck LeDoux over there. We are honoring people that have given us support for the rehabilitation, or the start of the rehabilitation anyway, of the Erickson Building over on Pearl Street. And we wanted to honor a few people that were helping us with that. So, without further ado, I'm going to say that Richard Parisi and Jas Parisi, both of them had a nice hand in painting the building, and I'm going to give these to you.
Thank you.
Also, we also have Russell Webb, Morgan Webb, and Michael Webb. I have three of these for you. And you can give them to them when they...
Please, sir.
No, thanks. Okay, so right now, we've got Rose Thomas. And we do have that here. You know, she was the one that had donated the showcases from the, correct me if I'm wrong, what's the church's name?
First Church of Baptist, but these are my house friends.
Okay, so who was this?
John Thomas.
John Thomas, too. I should make one up for him, too, I believe, so...
Thanks, George. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. All right, and we also have a couple here. One for Country Boy. They had made a, I don't think we have anybody here for Country Boy right now, but I'm just going to have them deliver it to her. They have been into business in good over fifty years here at the city. We also wanted to honor Matthew Abramsky, who also did donate the paint for the building, as well as Tony's Ace Hardware, which we did a little research on. They have, it does come up that they are, they have been in business as a hardware store over seventy years. But it's, like I said, even after, even before that, there was a grocery business, but if you want to just account the hardware store, it's about seventy years' worth of time here. So, they've been in business a while. Also, I wanted to honor the Hazel Park City Council Administration for their efforts. Here, I'm going to give this to Ed. Ed can hang this up in his office or wherever you want to do it.
We'll hang it up in the city hall.
There you go. So, I think we'll make sure that, I'd like to thank everybody involved, and I hope that this isn't the end of it. We still have a lot of work to do there, to make sure that this is going to be someplace that the, the city can enjoy. Thank you, thank you all for listening.
You did a good thing.
Madam Mayor, it's nice to also recognize Rich Robbins, I think, himself, for the good work that he did and that he put in, as well as the other members of the Historical Commission. I know Beth Holland's here as well. That building is shaping up nicely, and that never would have happened without the sweat equity that that commission put into renovation.
Thank you very much. All in favor? Okay. Civic announcements? Michael?
And Chuck LeDoux as well, I forgot to mention.
Name is Michael Vandevier. You're representing Hazel Park Creative Arts. On Friday, August twenty-sixth, from five until eight P.M., we will be holding our second annual pasta dinner fundraiser. We're still trying to raise enough money to replace the kiln for the high school. Basically, have similar to last year, I know most of you were there. We're also looking at this point for anyone that would like to sponsor a piece of student artwork. It's a fifty-dollar donation, and you get an old name tag next to the piece of artwork. We've received a number of donations from different groups, including the Red Wings provided an autographed hockey puck from Jonathan Erickson. So, that'll be available for silent auction, and we also have some basket raffles and so forth. So, August twenty-sixth, five until eight P.M., here at the Rec Center. And I know last year, a number of the council members did sponsor a piece of artwork. If you're willing to do so again, we would be very happy to have you do that.
Mr. Vandevier, they contact you, what's what number?
You can call me at two four eight, four two one, two eight nine five. Can also contact, do the sponsorship and purchase tickets in advance. Tickets are ten dollars in advance, fifteen dollars at the door, through our website at hpcreativearts.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Holland?
Madam Mayor, Council, Beth Holland, three zero five, West Milton. Civic announcement would be August twenty-first, Sunday, during the Hazel Park Growers and Makers Market. Animal Control and our rescue partner, PAW, which is Pet Adoption Alternative of Warren, are hosting a microchip clinic. This is, we're available for cats and dogs. Cats have to be in a carrier or on a leash, and all dogs must be leashed. If there's dogs that are a little bit aggressive, then we will have somebody that can, the tech will meet them around, and anybody can still bring their pet there. And the purpose of this is a microchip clinic. It is amazing, the number of animals that come through the pound that don't have even as much as a collar on. And it's not that they lost their collar, they don't have one. A microchip, a perfect example is yesterday, we had a bulldog, gorgeous bulldog named Priscilla that came in, and her microchip was never registered, but it was issued by a vet in California. So, our animal control officer had to wait till California hours opened up, got ahold of the vet, and they said which rescue it was through, tracked down the original owner, who was stationed in the military and transferred all around the country. At some point, the dog's ownership transferred, but the microchip was never registered. However, those little stinkers leave a good trail, and Justin just followed breadcrumb after breadcrumb, and phone calls and time zones later, was able to track down the owner who had recently been stationed here with a military position in this area, and the dog happened to get loose, and kids let it out of the yard. But literally, within a matter of six hours, we had that dog back home because of a microchip. It's a twenty-dollar investment, and it is the best investment you can make if you have a pet. And I would encourage all residents, if you have not microchipped your pet, come out and bring some extra money or your bridge card, because the Growers and Makers Market has an abundance of wonderful fresh produce, and it's a very social activity, too. So, that's it. I guess I would ask you all to come out on August twenty-first. It's going to be a good day, and hopefully we get a lot of pets chipped. Thank you.
Any other civic announcements?
Evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Jeff Campbell, Assistant City Manager. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the rescheduling of Oakland County's Come Out and Play, which I believe is August nineteenth. I believe, I could be a little wrong on the hours, maybe by a half hour, but it was three to eight last time, I think it's generally.
I think you read, I think you're right.
Three to eight, where they're going to have zip line, all kinds of great stuff for kids and adults. How long does zip line, two hundred feet?
Two hundred and fifty feet, not the longest zip line, but the zip line is probably always pretty short.
But it is scheduled August nineteenth, and it's a great time for the entire family, so I thought I'd mention that.
And that's where?
Green Acres Park.
Thank you. Any other civic announcements? Having none? Oh, civic announcement. Consent agenda, one to eight.
I'll move approval of consent agenda items one through eight.
Councilman, there's one thing that we would like you to delete from that, and that is item number four, pre-business license for ore carpentry. That sign is absolutely terrible. By any objective standard in Western civilization, it needs to come down and be replaced. So, the administration respectfully requests that you table item number four, pass the remainder of the consent agenda, and we will turn it over to Jeff Campbell in the Building Department for enforcement operations on this particular business.
Is Grant under, if he's done a better job?
Okay, I would amend my motion to remove item four from the consent agenda, so the motion would be to reprove items one through three and five through eight on the consent agenda.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we table item four.
Sorry. You're getting stereo.
Support.
All in favor? Motion carried. That's fast. Administrator report?
No administrator report tonight, man, for consideration.
No boards and commission? Table item of four sixteen, it's George.
Madam Mayor, Jeff Campbell's here for an update on that.
So, the issue with the showcase hearing was, we were priving a problem serving the homeowner. The homeowner appeared before the hearing officer last week, was given ninety days, and given a hefty bond to finish the repairs in the house. It's not a terrible-looking house, and obviously needs some work inside, and was also a heavily infested cat home. So, there's going to have to be some work done, but if, if certain things aren't done by August twentieth, it will be back before you on September the twelfth, I believe.
Any questions for Mr. Campbell on four sixteen, it's George, you may leave it on the table. Sir?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Who is the current owner of the property?
Harry Javens.
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 Javens, yeah, we know them.
He's back. We can't find him?
Oh, we can always find Harry. Harry just doesn't want to be found sometimes.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think some alternative means of service were...
He's hiding.
Yeah, or, and who knows what LLC this was supposedly under at Quinder, but yes, it was obtained in the picture.
Thank you.
So, we're going to stay table, though. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Any new business?
Mayor Parisi?
Yes.
I have a question. This was in my packet, this calendar for August, and I would like to know who's responsible for this?
Linda Yono in my office.
My compliments.
I would pass them along to her.
Could we post this each time it's created on the website and on cable?
Absolutely.
Speaking of cable, it seems to be working sometimes.
Yes. We hope so, but you're going to have issues with cable until the construction's completed. Just want to let you know that, so, but, yeah, we can, we'll take a look at it, speak with Leland here.
I know we had some issues before.
We can see what we need to do, so...
Mayor Parisi?
Yes.
On the cable issue, if we have some sort of an emergency, perhaps could we impose upon the schools to use theirs?
We could, we could. And our school will work, we have people that can go in and do that. But if it is down, then we could use the schools as well.
Yeah, that would...
We actually have a really good working relationship with them now.
I know, it's wonderful.
For the questions of the administration, I know we entered into some kind of an agreement with the city of Ferndale about the bike lanes along Woodward Heights. I noticed, I think it was last week, they painted there, wondering if that is something we had on the books, in the plans, along Woodward Heights. I'm interested in Woodward Heights.
Well, it's just, it's from, basically, Ferndale just to, at this point, as part of the project, as part of the trail goes, to John R., so it's not very far. It's going through Giffords and Webster. I did get an email from them yesterday. I think it's costing the city a total of six hundred dollars with some signs that we're getting as well, that can direct people to high school and other ways of the route.
I think it would be neat to get it to go all the way to Quinder, and then...
Yeah, I mean, we're looking into that to discuss it. This might be actually an interesting sort of trial here to see how it goes and how the biking goes, especially because we're going to be going for our end from one lane to a four-lane road, and see how that sort of interacts going forward. But it is a small cost, and they're doing all that work over there. But, yeah, I will find out when our section is and get you a timing thing, because it'll definitely be next month, just for construction and paint drive purposes.
Mayor Parisi? Mayor Parisi?
Good, yes.
Question for Councilman LaCurel.
Yes.
I understand your enthusiasm to extend the bike lane from John R. to Quinder, and I think that's wonderful, but my goodness, that area from the curb to, and that would encompass the, the bike lane is, I think, probably dangerous for a bicycle.
I, I do agree there. Along Woodward, in Ferndale, what they did is, it's about half of the lane, so you have two, a wider travel lane in each direction.
Right.
But it's a little bit less than half of the curbside lane, so it's really half, it's in bad shape, I understand. I'm just interested in, I like to see the future, even on a development, because bikes coming up to Quinder, from the Quinder Cut out of Detroit, hooking in with Ferndale, people will, you do portals to let them know what's, some attractions, an art garden, a restaurant, a microbrew, as they're driving through. It's a, I think the MML has done a lot of work for communities to use economic development. Bikes, people come from around the country and bike through the, around the world, and bike through areas just for fun. But I agree, we would be needing Woodward Heights to be resurfaced.
Somewhat upgraded.
Well, we're doing some work, thanks to the county and the section between the Expressway and John R., so that's where the county funds are going to come from, and that's how we're going to utilize them. Actually, I'll be honest with you, I would have used them to do West George instead, but we didn't think they were, so I'll have to try to find another way to do that street, because that's got to be done.
Well, I think we have other issues that's probably just as important on Ninety Mile and parts of John R. as well.
But those will be done when that bond expires.
Right.
That refinancing, some, some of them are, we're already looking at that, studying that situation.
Should we recognize our county commissioner?
Miss Dan? Yes. You're just...
Just in time.
Just in time, it's a great time.
Thank you, you're hiding from me this evening, so forgive me. So, I do have hot-off-the-press county directories, and I want to make sure that all of the council and staff get it, there's extras for the community that want to do, take them. I was a very busy county commissioner last week and the week before, working on regional transit, and you've heard me talk about this, I'm a broken record, but I felt very strongly that people have the right to vote on this. You may disagree about the plan, but we, we were, I was working to urge Oakland County to allow citizens the right to vote. And fortunately, a deal was made with Oakland County and McComb County, along with the Regional Transit Authority, so that it did go for a unanimous vote of the Regional Transit Authority, and we will see a millage ask in November to create a connected, rapid, regional type of transit that goes amongst four counties, Wash shop, McComb, Oakland, and Wayne. And some of the greatest reasons to do this is so that people can get to jobs. You know, crossing counties, people can't go where jobs are, can't afford car insurance, so this will create a connected, rapid, and reliable system. And then also, in the plan, there will be additional services for seniors, people with disabilities, you know, there's going to be a train, you know, it's really a very fine plan, so you will hear me talking about that more. We are working on the budget in Oakland County, you know, it is a, we had a three-year balanced budget presented to us. I start budget hearings on Thursday to review, pick at, you know, determine that it's the right budget and that I can vote for. In addition to that, I'm just letting you hear my talking voice. So, those are some of the things going on that I wanted to tell you about, you know, for Oakland County. Questions for me?
Mayor Parisi?
Yes.
The proposed budget, is it online?
It should be.
I agree, but...
No, usually all of it is. I have a book, you know, I get the big book, but...
So far, do you know it is?
Yes. All, you know, Oakland County is supposed to be transparent, so I haven't really looked for it, but it's supposed to be all in the line. And if you can't find it, let me know. And we do webcast all of our meetings, so you can see me in action if you want to look at me, you know, budget hearings, you know, the report on the Great Lakes Water Authority at the last finance committee, we did have a briefing on that. It is still challenging as far as what's going on and why our bills are so high, and it is systemic. Part of our deal that we negotiated with the Great Lakes Water Authority, we did take on a billion dollars' worth of previous debt from finance, the swap steals, and that was part of our agreement. Unfortunately, it's going to be there for twenty to thirty years. As the system becomes more efficient, we can refinance some of that debt, but that is the overlay on all of our bills. And there's also a couple, you know, there are some other concerns, such as the Highland Park bills, outstanding bills. They owe three hundred million dollars, and that's still not settled. They're not billing for services since 2012, and how to handle that. And so, that impacts us as suburban customers. Yes, we're watching it closely, I see, I have the same reaction, so, trying to manage it, but these are some contributing factors to our water, whether we're... So, I do encourage people to watch us online.
Thank you. And you know what, Commissioner, if you don't mind me pointing out that when you and Melanie Piana requested signatures for the RTA support, all five of the council members in Hazel Park signed down to support that.
And I felt so proud that my community was supporting that, and I do appreciate that. You know, it's, it's a strong statement. And I felt very strongly that unfortunately, our county exec doesn't remember us as much on this end of the county. He's willing to spend, you know, to encourage a billion dollars for I-75, but didn't want to contribute to RTA. I'm still trying.
Quick question.
For all of us.
I have a quick question. Does it require passage in each of the counties, or does it only require a majority of voters?
The good news is, it's just a majority of votes, so each county does not have to separately pass it. So, it encourages all of us to get out and, you know, place a vote. And I understand, I'm not minimizing, that it is a tax, a one-point-two mil, but the return on investment, the economic numbers, they show that Cleveland is like three hundred percent or something for the return on investment, economic development, jobs. And our goal is to have more businesses like you're doing here, more jobs, so we can deflect the millage of the individual resident. So, it's an investment in our future for the region.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I have a question outside the budget, and perhaps you don't even know, but do you know who paid for that Auburn Hills sign over I-75?
I saw that, I remember, too.
Is it...
It's a big fancy sign on a big fancy bridge, unlike any bridge we'd ever made at a park.
It's on University Drive over...
It has lights on it.
Usually, signs are game for, and, you know, if it's on, you know, if it's on I-75...
It's a great, you can't miss.
It's got to be, it's got to be a Michigan, a state of Michigan sign, because they're usually responsible for, you know, the roads that they service, and they signage that way. So, you're telling me that the state invested in a...
Oh, yes. It's a huge welcome to Auburn Hills.
It is, it's huge.
Goes, goes all the way across.
Do you know something? No, it's welcome to Auburn Hills, and it's not, it would have been Auburn Hills paid for it.
It's on the bridge.
They would have paid for that. I thought it was a road traffic center, they would have done that. It's Auburn Hills. I thought it was something on the road, so... Thank you, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you.
Any more new business here? Abby Hahn?
Well, one thing I do want to bring up, Madam Mayor, is that the Hazel Park Art Fair will be taking place at Green Acres Park on Saturday, August twenty-seventh, and Sunday, August twenty-eighth, Saturday from ten to nine, and Sunday from ten to seven.
And you're ready? Ready? Okay. Pardon? Um, what, communication? Communicate? Blah, blah, blah. Communications from departments?
Any department heads have anything?
I have nothing at this time, I don't have anything.
Jeffrey Campbell?
And I'm sure the city manager will talk about this in very detail, but I just want to thank council, residents, everybody on Facebook for participating in the vote for the Community Excellence Award for placemaking talent, or placemaking talent. We were named the finalists, which is a big deal, and we will be presenting our project, the John R. Corridor Improvement Plan, at the Michigan Municipal League Annual Meeting in Mackinac, September fourteenth to sixteenth. And I just want to thank everybody for their support from the beginning of the project, whether it was supporting the new businesses that came in, or the CNU meeting, all the way up to the vote that just occurred, and made a difference. Thank you so much. We should all be proud of achieving the honor being finalists. Thank you.
Thank you. That was kind of fun. Anybody else want to speak?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, just to follow up on what Jeff said, we were one of the finalists, and we were the finalist in that category called the Place for Talent category in the Community Excellence, Community Excellence Award for the Michigan Municipal League. This is a big deal. This is something very important. The city of Hazel Park has never been on award list, and they, we've never even been a finalist before in the past. So, the fact that we are up for this award in... a finalist before in the past. So the fact that we are up for this award in, uh, September at the Michigan Municipal League, uh, convention, this is something that we should all be very proud of. City of Hazel Park has obviously achieved some great things in the past, uh, couple of years. Our John R. Corridor revitalization program has, uh, been recognized not only by the MML, but we've gotten publicity, uh, internationally in terms of what we've been able to accomplish. And we're seeing more things happening on John R., but we're also seeing this spillover in our corridors as well. We've got construction going on now on Eight Mile. We've got construction going down, uh, on Nine Mile. We've got the biggest redevelopment project in Oakland County going up on Ten Mile, the Tri-Town Counter Center. So this is huge. We are transforming Hazel Park on a daily basis. But again, this is and always will be a work in progress. Hazel Park is only going to be as good as the citizens that we have living here any given day and the support that they want to provide to this community. Had we not passed those villages, none of this would have happened. No one would have come here because we would not have had adequate city services to protect those businesses and to keep Hazel Park, uh, the fine community that it is, the fine, safe community. So again, well, I'm so pleased with, uh, what we've accomplished so far. We need to make sure that we don't just rest on our laurels and that we keep looking for new businesses to bring in and that we keep doing things to strengthen our neighborhoods as well. Uh, our land care program has been very successful lately. We hope to even ramp that up more, uh, and do some more work with that, possibly the building of several new homes that should start this construction season. So we're working everywhere to make Hazel Park a better place. All that said, Michigan's system of municipal finance is still broken, and God's not making any new Hazel Park, so our, we don't have a real ability to grow ourselves out of this. But we're doing the best that we can to grow everywhere that there is vacant land. And the only way to grow is to create new structures. It, uh, it may help us to avoid taking a loss if those businesses are vacant or occupied, but an occupied business doesn't pay any more taxes than a vacant one. Once those taxes are capped, those taxes are capped by headland propay at 5% of the rate of inflation, whatever's left. So that's why the new construction is, is so, uh, important. So again, this is a really big deal. Another thing I want to talk about is how proud I am of the voters of Hazel Park. Uh, we didn't put out a real campaign for this S'moresa election because it really didn't affect the residents in the city of Hazel Park. All we were asking you to do was to vote yes to give the people of Wayne, Michigan, a choice so that they could make their own decision on whether or not they wanted to join S'moresa and levy the additional mills. The people of Wayne, uh, they did not choose to vote to levy the additional mills in their community, so even though it passed in Hazel Park, obviously it, uh, it failed in Wayne, so, uh, they will not be participating with us. But I was pleased that Hazel Park residents took the time to understand that and actually passed that here because it was a very confusing proposal. We didn't put a lot of education into it. Frankly, we really didn't have much of a dog in the fight other than the fact that we said we would help Wayne and give them the opportunity to do, uh, to participate in S'moresa, and that's what happened. So thank you, Hazel Park. The Hazel Park voters continue to be, uh, the smartest, most progressive voters, I think, in southeast Michigan, and they take their time to read these issues and understand it. Anybody who voted no, I don't blame you. It was a, it was a confusing proposal, but you were at no risk by voting yes on this proposal. There was, there was, there was no downside to not voting yes on this. All we were doing was giving Wayne the shot to participate. But if anybody does have any questions about how S'moresa operates or why we had to go to, to do that type of, uh, of an authority, please let me know. We did get a very favorable write-up in that, in National Magazine about how Hazel Park and East Point came together to form this creative authority to enable us to fund our fire departments and thereby fund our basic services as well. So again, uh, thank you, Hazel Park. And that's all I have tonight.
Mr. Schiffman, would you like to speak?
Briefly, I would second Eddie's kudos in recognizing that all the good that's going on in Hazel Park is directly attributable to the citizens of this community. And I've been around 20 some odd years, and I have said the same thing for the last 25 years. This was not a miracle. It wasn't that the city won the law, that people consistently, consistently support this city. So it's really a miracle city. So I second what Eddie said. Thank you.
Councilman Selvin?
Thank you, Mayor Precy.
You're welcome.
I was very proud of our town when it came to that S'moresa vote, too. Uh, it just shows that we in Hazel Park don't just care about ourselves, but we, we are willing to share our, our good fortune without, of course, sharing the dollar signs to go with it. But nevertheless, uh, we were, we were there for them if they would have decided to do, do it for themselves. Uh, I would just like to comment nationally. At our last meeting, I, I was, uh, feeling so horrible because of so many horrible events. And this meeting, I am so pleased to tell everyone how proud I am of our Olympians and, and what they have accomplished and are accomplishing. They, we have every right to be proud of them. I get goosebumps when I hear that national anthem. And I will finish by saying, if you love someone, tell them so. If you have children, please hug them every day and tell them you love them. Thank you.
Councilman Webb?
Thank you, Mayor. I thank everybody for coming out this evening. I also like to thank the Historical Society for, uh, taking on that project over there. A lot of people helped out and did a lot of things. Uh, Chuck Ladoo also re, redid the brick on the front of the opening of the door. It was amazing how he changed the image of that whole entrance area. But it's a really nice thing to, to take on a building that's been vacant for 20 some years and turn it into a positive change for the community that they can, everybody can share in. Also, the residents of this town, they stand up for what they believe in, and they believe in what they vote on and what they want to participate in. And I'd like to say thank you to everybody who took that chance by voting on the S'moresa, but also, most importantly, supporting our library. Our library has been there for many years, and it's also a part of our history. And without the history, without the knowledge to be able to take care of the young children and other people that do participate in the library programs, that's what it's all about, is the other residents, the kids, the kids that really take advantage of those programs that's there. And that's, uh, we all have kids. We're all going to be grandparents and have smaller kids at one time in our life, maybe. But, uh, but, yeah, it's, it's something that we all have to take care of the future, and the future is our children.
Yep, that's true.
Um, also, the, uh, the Creative Arts is doing a great, great thing again on the, the board at Art Fair kicks off. Just trying to, my wife's part of that board, and, uh, they're trying to make sure it's enough funds to finish the project that they started last year. The costs went up on the kiln, and that's why they're still raising some more money for that project as well. But also, they also support some of the smaller arts programs with the elementary schools, with some of the teachers that want to do after-hours programs with the kids. So that's what we also do. I, I should say we, I, well, they, they kind of wrapped me into their whole organization since my wife's on there and bike and drones. But, uh, we did that a couple of years ago to be able to sponsor those programs that we thought was being lost due to the cuts and shortfalls in the school budgets and, and the villages that were not be, you know, that they had going on there. But, uh, speaking of that, I'd like to say thank you once again for coming out and, um, have a good weekend.
Councilman Lucero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, thank you to everybody for coming out and it is, again, thank all the voters, not just for the library, but, uh, the, uh, the zoo village passing as well, you know. I want to encourage everybody, too, to come out to the Art Fair. Mr. Kovich said the fourth weekend in August, and that's the weekend that the growers and makers market won't be happening, but all the other weekends, the growers and makers market is going on. It's a lot of fun. Got some good peaches and some jam, strawberry jam there and...
The peaches were great. They were so...
There's a lot of good, good stuff there. It's fun to see the people volunteering. I, I can't wait to see how this will grow over the years. It'll be a neat thing that we've got going, like the Arts Council and the Art Fairs and these schools that we want in our community. It's, so, nice to be a part of it. Watch out for the bicyclists out there. The bicyclists, you also are supposed to have headlights and lights on your bike at night. People can't see you. Thank you for coming out.
Henry, do we need an exact session?
I don't need an exact session, but...
I thought I heard you say something.
I can update you all.
Thank you.
Mayor Poe-Town?
Yes, uh, you know, I could go through all the things that we have going on here in Hazel Park. It's a busy little place now. Uh, we have the, uh, Art Fair on Saturday and Sunday, the 27th and 28th. That's the fifth annual Art Fair, uh, getting bigger and bigger every year. It's a real interesting place to go. You should be there in Green Acres Park. Just walk through, even if you don't purchase any art. The Growers and Makers Market every Sunday in Green Acres Park, a lot of, uh, fine fruits and vegetables and some crafts there. Uh, the, there's a person that does organic makeup, and they do very well there, as I understand it. They have a very good product. The Oakland Hazel Park Come, uh, Come Play in, uh, Green Acres Park again, uh, that'll be a pretty interesting...
Come zipline with the city manager?
They may have a weight limit, so I might not be able to, uh, to do that. Uh, the spaghetti dinner on the, uh...
Friday before the Art Fair.
That's the 26th?
26th.
26th from 5 to 8, uh, always a good time, uh, to be had by all there. The Arts Council met yesterday, and we're working on Arttoberfest. Uh, I don't know if you recall, uh, last year, we had our first Arttober, which is a, a walk through Hazel Park that has stops at all the art galleries and, uh, art studios. So, uh, there should be some information coming on that, uh, soon. Uh, I'm glad to hear about the Historical Commission taking over the old library, uh, for many reasons. The Historical Commission is a, a real interesting thing here in Hazel Park. Uh, plus, I think I still owe some back fines on a book that I, but that's... So I'm glad to see it's a Historical Commission now. And, uh, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and participating in the democratic process. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I was just going to say Hazel Park is a great place to be.
Mayor Precy?
Yes.
One more thing. Uh, I would just like to congratulate, uh, Councilman Lucero because on Saturday, he will be gaining a son-in-law.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Kara is a super nice young lady. What a great job you did raising her, and, uh, we wish her all the happiness in the future in her marriage.
Thank you.
And before, before Mayor does her comments, uh, I also want to recognize my intern, Jared Gageos from Michigan State. He's going to be going back to, uh, MSU to, uh, finish his bachelor's degree in international relations, and, uh, want to thank him for his service this, uh, this summer. This will be his last council before he goes back. He'll come to do this during the year, but did great work, and, uh, again, thank you, Jared. Expecting great things out of you, so don't let us down. Hazel Park boy, Hazel Park high grad, so, uh, very proud of the work he's doing with my office.
Uh, Art to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Support.
On paper?
Aye.
Most of Kara.